Stand for the flag, please.
I collect allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to their public for it to stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. So...
Introduction, please.
So, board members, we have Bob Jones, Mike Beecher, Jessica Vanort is virtual tonight, Harry Brown, and Rich Hewlett, and I am Kristen, and we have Harley, and Frank, and Nancy, and Michael, and Dale. And that's all.
Okay.
No Julie, no Deb, and no Devon yet, but maybe we will get Devon, Mary, he's supposed to be here. Um, so additions, there are a couple of additions tonight, there, and one deletion. And first, there's an executive session to discuss confidential attorney-client communications made for the purpose of providing professional legal services to the body, and that has been requested for 8:00 PM. So depending on how far we get, um, and the way that Zoom is set up now, that's in here, we'll have to ask everybody to step out and then come back after executive session. Um, there is a citizen concern that was just received today via email that I think just should be acknowledged, um, via, it's about the roads, um, and I thought we could just pop that in during the foreman's report. And then there was a town hall auditorium inquiry that I thought we could talk about during facilities. Um, and then the electric vehicle charging grant presentation is not happening tonight, so that needs to be rescheduled, so that will be another time. And the minutes that need, or anything else that anybody would like to have on the agenda? Or taken off of the agenda?
I think we're good.
Okay.
Did everybody think about the minutes?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Jessica?
Yes.
Thank you. Minutes approved. We have nothing from Devon, so we'll cruise right on to announcements. Nothing. Zoning administrator, just report.
I attended the planning commission meeting last week where we have now started working on, or they have started working on the town plan. Once that's complete, we'll go back and start continuing revising the bylaws. So the other thing I've been doing with the decrease in the demand for permits, I've started to do some, some sites visits around and haven't found anything extraordinary. Continue to scan the documents and I'm through 2015. And then I'm also gathering information for the short-term rental ordinance that we may be drafting. I hope to have more information about that after I attend the town fair up in Burlington in September, because there's a whole session on short-term rentals. And when we draft the ordinance, it will be in coordination with two, two local hosts, so they have input into the ordinance as well. The thing that we need to consider is whether or not you want to do a 1% option tax. A lot of the towns already have it, a lot of them are adopting it. So short-term rentals, they collect a 9% rooms tax. And as a municipality, you have the option of also adding a 1% onto that 9%. So I don't know if it's something that comes directly to the board to approve, or if it has to go on the ballot for about come March. So just something to think about. As I said, a lot of towns are doing it as a way to just get additional income into the town. They also, on that same note, you can also do, um, meals, sorry, you can do meals, drinks, rooms, tax. So it would also incorporate any alcohol that is sold in the town, as well as any meals that are sold in the town, also at that 1% rate. Um, and then we have a request from the workers here in the, the town offices to get a large format printer slash scanner, because when we get these big maps in now, we have to copy them in like five or six different sections and then, you know, paste them all together, tape them all together. And a lot of the people that come in to do the research have also asked if we have, if there's going to be any opportunity for us to get a large printer or scanner. Obviously, they pay considerably more for a copy on a large format printer slash scanner than they do for the $1 or whatever that Deb charges them for the little 9x11. And John Thrasher was in today, and I think he says he pays anywhere between $3 and $5 for a copy on a large format printer. Currently, he has to go to, he says Dorset has one and Wells has one. But he said if we got one, he would definitely be a frequent visitor here. So they go between $2,000 and $3,000. And I don't know what other additional information you want to move this along, but again, it's a request from, everybody here would have the use for it needed. Do you think we ought to get some firm pricing up?
Yeah, I think it's necessary. I thought we had discussed that, though, didn't we, a couple of months ago?
I think we've been going to that subject, it comes up a lot, so would you be interested in getting some firm pricing?
I can definitely do it, and the assessor's office, too, is the one who would be the main user of it from a scan standpoint.
I thought we had approved that. We could go back and see, but I remember discussing that a couple of meetings.
I thought we put it in the budget.
I, I thought so, too.
Or there was not the concept of using ARPA funds for it, for office supplies.
I can have a number for the next meeting.
I can look back, too, and see, because if it's already been approved, then it's already been approved, so, but we can...
But at least if we knew, if we had a number of what, what we were looking at, I think it'd make it a lot cleaner, for sure, so.
I contacted Dorset offices today to find out, because according to people that have used it, they like the one that Dorset has, and we will get, we'll contact the same people they bought theirs from, find out what that number is, but they're the ones that said they thought it was between $2,000 and $3,000. That's all I have.
Now, when you talked about the, the 1% tax option, if you did it on drinks or, or meals, would that encompass all the places that sold drinks and meals? So that would be like at the barn also, or?
It would be at the barn, it would be at Gibbs.
Yeah.
You know, it's on any alcohol sold in the township.
How does that work if, if they cater a party, I wonder? Would they still have to pay, then?
I would think so, because that's part of meals and, meals and drinks tax, so yeah. It would be, because they're paying, I think right now on meals, it's something like 10%, and it's an additional 1%. Rooms is 9%, would be additional 1%. And BRVO, if, so if we go back to short-term rental discussion, Airbnb and BRVO collect that for you when you book. And it's put, so you don't have to file anything, they do all the filing for you. And that's where the majority of the short-term rentals are put through.
Anybody else have any questions for?
So you're not afraid of the short-term rentals disappearing, and then we don't have as much business brought into town?
No.
You don't think so?
I don't, I don't know why, for 1%, I mean, as I said, every...
Then if it's not a big deal, then why have 1%?
It's just a way for the municipality...
It's a way to collect more money, so more tax, is what you're saying.
Right, and it's, it's, it's a tax base that doesn't affect the town people. So it's the people that are coming into town, the visitors, that are paying the 1%.
But that just means that the, the hosts are going to raise their prices. They have to raise their price to pay the 1% and receive what they're getting right now.
You know, I, I don't know that, that's the discussion we'll have with the two hosts when we talk about this whole ordinance, if we want to go down that 1% rule. You know, if somebody's paying $200 a night, that tax is, what, 18 bucks? You think it's going to make a difference to them if they're paying 20 bucks in tax versus 18 bucks? I don't know, I can't imagine if they would, but...
I don't believe it's even disclosed upfront, I think if, say you were $350 a night for a room, and then the tax gets added on to that, so it's not even, you don't have a set rate with the tax.
If you know what the total amount is, the host knows what the total amount is.
But they don't know that 1% is accurate on...
Right, but then the tax goes on top of that, so if you quote a, someone that's going to rent a room, if you quote them $350, when they show up, you're, you're charging an extra $35 on top of that automatically, and then the percentage goes to the state, so, or to the town. So it's, it's not, they wouldn't have to charge more upfront, they're, they're going to tell you that their rate is $350, but then you're just automatically going to have to pay the 10% tax on top of that.
It's, I'm just, it's a move a lot of the towns are making, so, and they said we'll discuss it with the hosts, I think.
I've traveled a lot and paid 16, 17% on hotels. And the thought that occurs to me is, I wonder who my representative is? And I don't have a representative. And it's that classic taxation without representation. And I think we have a storied history in this country about that.
Any other questions for Nancy tonight? Thank you, Nancy. Anything from the planning commission, Jessica?
I don't have a report tonight because I've been on the road and wasn't at last night's meeting. So the little bit that Nancy gave us is what we're going to hear about last night's meeting, unless the one else has a report, thank you.
Okay, Frank?
All we did was just take out a lot of stuff, Nancy agreed, that was old stuff that just needed to be taken out of the plan, and we haven't really added anything of substance.
Okay, thank you for that, Frank. Any other questions from planning commission? Road foreman's report, winter sand is the top, south. Did you guys get a chance to look at the?
We did.
The gravel and stuff?
Yeah, and he did point out some, some pretty nice pockets of material, sand, very clean. There's no silt in them, you know, that I saw. Of course, we didn't have an excavator there to, to dig it down and see how much volume was there, but what he did show me was nice, clean material. You know, we're not going to buy any material that's any cleaner than, than what I saw today. But there's pockets of it, so we're going to have to dig it out with an excavator.
Yeah.
But there's plenty of fill there, we can fill the holes back in with, you know, with the dead sand and...
And there's areas that more sand, I think, needs to be taken out, but the top burden needs to be removed. So there's a little preparation on some of the most locations, but there are some locations that we could go right to work on, so.
So would we need, still need to rent a, a screen to?
Yeah, if you're going to take it out of the...
A screen?
Didn't Leon have a deal, or was that just for the machine?
Right.
Or was that the excavator?
So he had one just for the screen, and then he had a separate one where he would rent his excavator, and then, and that was a good price for the excavator, and I can pull that up. And he was going to donate the screen if we went with that option, to meet his in-kind services for the stone we had taken out of the...
Okay.
And I did get some prices from SLC as well. Which their winter sand is $11.90 a ton. Their 3/8 is $14.90. And their 3/4 drainage is $12.90. And those are products we've used in the past, so mostly the, the 3/4 drainage, we did mix some 3/8 and a little bit of winter sand in the past, but... Let's see if I can get this. So it was, uh, it was $1,500 for a week with the excavator and the, the screen, so...
That's very reasonable. Now, was it a reed screen, or what?
I don't know what you call it, it's a self-contained...
Shaker.
Yeah, shaker, string.
One they had for there.
Yeah. His, he wants to make sure that, you know, we have a couple of guys there feeding this and tending it, because when it sits there and just, and it's not being fed constantly, it, it can wear the thing down and it causes damage. And he said if that happens, then, you know, we're going to have to, you know, compensate him for the screens. So what you didn't think would be a problem if we had a couple guys running. And he said, worst-case scenario, the screens are $400, you know, if we end up destroying it. But he said that's what happened the last time, when we did it before, when Cliff was doing it alone, and the thing sat there a lot and kind of wore it out, just wore out the screens, so...
And it won't convey it away, it's one of those reed screens, you dig right out of it?
Yeah, I have a machine filling, you know, tending it, both sides, you know, filling and, and removing both the sand product and the stone product.
Going to want to have that anyway, so you can get it done as quick as possible.
Right.
You know, to put it out, you know, as much as you can, and...
Yep, and I'm thinking...
A week time.
2,000 yards total, and if we split that about half and half, we've got enough, nearly enough in Westfala, so I don't think we'd need to truck a lot over there. If we put 40 loads over there, and then, you know, balance and get at least 90 loads, maybe in Paul. We, we didn't draw a lot of the stone product in last year because we needed to mix it, and we didn't have a lot of the mixed product to mix with it in the beginning, so... So to get that pile back where we need to, we want to get back close to 100, 100 loads there, so... So 2,000 yards is probably what we're going to need to get through the winter.
So it seems, sounds like a better option than, than buying it and talking about it?
Yeah, and I think what had happened in the past, too, is, you know, they had some veins that they were digging out of, and there was a lot of silt and dead sand in them, you know, and they just, they chased those with, dug it with a payloader, and in this case, what he showed me, they can, you know, they'll have to pick and choose with the excavator, but there is quite a lot of good material there that's clean. You know, as good as anything that we're going to buy, so.
Be a little bit more careful of how you're picking it and digging it, and then we'll end up with a really good product and, okay, at a good price.
Yeah, there's more chase in it now, but it's worth it.
Yeah, if we can get a year, we still need the stone, though, the drainage stone.
Right, you still need, you know...
We need to put up some drainage stones.
Some stuff out of Waltham, and that can be mixed up some, the 3/4 drainage is, you know, probably the, the best for the back roads, which is $12.90. The winter sand is cheaper, but it's so fine.
Yeah.
It doesn't, yeah, doesn't offer a lot, that you couldn't mix a little bit of that in it. They don't have a lot of that, the other, the 3/8s and the 3/4, they have plenty, the winter sand.
The only place that I found that that worked really good was mixing it with the salt on the blacktop.
On the blacktop, but the, the brown sand will do the same thing.
It'll do the same thing if you get a screen down.
Okay.
So there's some options.
Sounds like a reasonable option, we're all, every, the board's all good with that?
Let's give it a shot and see what, you know.
You good with that, Jessica, you understand what we were discussing, or?
Yeah, that sounds fine to me.
Okay, thank you. All right, so you'll proceed with that action, that's all budgeted anyways for all that equipment and stuff, so, good.
Do you want to, so, just for the minutes, I just want to write what that action is? So proceeding with the, the rental for the screen and excavator?
All right, we're going to...
The screen, our own winter sand, okay.
And then we're going to buy the, the 3/4 drainage from SLC.
Going to do a motion for that, or doesn't need it?
No, it's all budgeted, it's for renting, processing winter, winter materials and stuff like that. There's, there's line items to rent the screen and etc., so...
Okay, got it.
Okay, good. So the other thing, we got an email late today, the resident on Walnut Hill Road was saying that the, the end of the road, that road is very bad, but that's a private driveway, correct?
Walnut Hill is a private driveway.
Okay, so she was wondering if, if there was any type of funding available to, to repair that road due to, I don't know if it's due to the floods or lack of maintenance or what, but...
It's privately owned?
Yeah.
Probably little potholes, it just sits down in there.
Yes.
The concern...
Not sure which end of it.
The concern, too, is about emergency vehicles being able to pass. I guess somebody, an ambulance had to go up there not long ago and noted that they already consider it to be mostly impassable, so that was the concern, but...
Now, where is that?
Off of Kelly Hill.
Just pass the only way he's in there.
So whoever owns it's going to, is responsible to fix it?
Yeah, there's three residents out there.
And there's probably a right-of-way for all three, I would assume, if it's a development, I don't know that, but...
Well, they owned it all at one time, and then it was divided up there, so it's...
I guess.
Family and ex-family, they're just...
I don't, I don't know of any agency she could reach out to, that would be all unheard, but you can say that we, if you didn't mind answering the email, just saying we discussed it, and because of the private road, there's really nothing, she would have to research her own resources to...
Find the owners.
As long as, the entrance of it is fine on the town road, right?
Yeah, the town road is fine.
Our porch, our porch.
Right, whatever it is, and then the rest of it's all...
My recollection, the last, you know, we were up there a week or so ago. And I can't imagine it's gotten that sense, but I do know the road, I'm familiar with the driveway. And yeah, it's been a long time coming, I think.
All right. What else you got to report, Joe?
Yeah, AH, we finally got some info back on that. He had to do a pump rebuild, and that is ready. He sent me a message today that that's done and can be picked up. The tablet that I have doesn't have the cellphone capability, so that's of no, no use. So we would need a, a new tablet that has the cellphone abilities. And I also have Keith's old computer.
What? I just want to clarify, so the, the app that's necessary for the state in order to do all of the inventory, like the road inventory that Stephanie Bork has told us about?
Yeah.
It has, it requires a tablet that has cellphone capabilities on it, which I thought, I thought that the iPads have, but that generation must not have it.
No, it's a, you can choose whether or not you add it to your...
Is it, so do you know if it's something that you can add on after?
Uh, no, no, it's, I mean, it has Bluetooth and stuff like that, but it has to be hooked to...
Right, it doesn't have the, all of the bells and whistles.
So we got to buy a little bit smarter one?
Yeah.
Okay.
That way it can be taken into the field and you can actually, it will show up right on the screen where you are in each segment of road and where they start and end, so you know exactly, you know...
So maybe Stephanie knows exactly what we need, or can send us?
She should, maybe she can send a link to us, and that way we know it's the right one.
And we can move forward with that.
If you have something in your service.
Yeah.
So she had said that you don't need to have the service, the tablet, the device just needs to be capable of updating it.
Because once you activate it while you're in Wi-Fi, then it will maintain it. And if you go into the pod, you don't shut it off.
It does a thing and remembers it, hmm, okay, that sounds cool.
So...
So we'll look into a better one than that?
I also have Keith's old computer, and I don't know what I'm supposed to do with that. I, we don't need it, I don't know if it's something Vinnie can take, or I don't really care who takes it, it just...
How old is it?
Old.
I take computers and put Linux on them and donate them to...
I don't know if there's a thing on there that should be, be erased or deleted, or, you know, whether Vinnie should take it from it.
We just did 200 of them at the school.
Well, maybe...
Non-useable anymore, so...
It might be a good idea to look at what's on there and see if there's any sort of, like, documents or...
Take the internet information off before you scrap it.
Who would, uh, who would like both those pieces, you, Chris?
Why don't you bring it here? Yeah, grab them off here and I'll, I'll deal with it from there.
Ever hear of leash bit?
Leash bit?
It's open source and free, and it will take everything on a hard drive.
We'll talk about it.
And make it just like a brand-new hard drive, too.
Okay, we'll talk.
Anything else that you got, Dale?
So we're just going to continue to work on these grants, get them finished out and submitted. Stephanie's scheduled to come down and meet with us again to, you know, complete that and to have it recorded and sent, so we can get reimbursement. Rick's going to work on some more roadside mowing on our ver, so that we're ready for grading when that time comes. I also got an email about another employee, can't, you know, possibility. I don't, do we, are we talking about that now, or are we, are we talking about the employees, the possibilities, the people who submitted applications, or?
Yeah, I'd say maybe not.
So here, I finally received a message back, an email this afternoon from here. So I haven't reached out to him, but he did provide a phone number, so that's a possibility as well, so... And we did meet with the other, the other two candidates. One had already seen other employment, so... That's what I have for that. Now, this, I also have one more thing. And I've put my heart and soul into this job, and now I feel it's time for me to move on and have another opportunity, so I think I'm going to pursue that. And so my last day will be the last day of this month. So that's three and a half weeks away.
Okay, sorry to hear that, but congratulations on your new opportunity, and I hope it works out well for you.
So I can be reached or whatever to help guide wherever we go with these, these new, new hires, but I'm dragging my feet too long, that's all.
Okay. Well. Well, thank you for your service. Anybody else have anything for?
I did have one more thing. I had emailed everybody that letter to go, potentially to go to the state, to Chris Taft, about the extension of the parking, Route 30 along onto School Street, and I didn't hear back from anybody, except for Dale. So I wanted, I didn't want to send it until I got everybody's, the, the way we left it at the last meeting was that I would send out the draft, and everybody would take a look and let me know, yea or nay, and then I would send it, so I didn't hear back, so... If everybody wants to take a look at that and let me know, or maybe you already have, and I can send that out, or not?
I just took for granted you were going to send that down.
Okay.
I read it.
Um, so anyway, yeah. So just take a look at that and let me know, and I can email it off this week, it's in your emails. I think I sent it sometime last week, so I can resend it to get it to the top of your inboxes.
Yeah, okay. Assessors, anything from the assessors?
Nope.
Any memo from the town clerk?
Um, yes.
Memo from the town clerk?
Um, Deb will be out of the office on the 12th and the 13th of September for the Vermont Municipal Clerk and Treasurers Conference, and that is all.
All right. Yeah, that was short and sweet. Good for her, and Julie, town treasurer.
Yes. One sec. So from Julie, there are two warrants this week. Payroll is nine thousand thirty-four dollars and sixty-seven cents. Accounts payable is thirty thousand two fifty-one sixty-one. General fund money is twenty-six thousand four thirty-nine forty-six. Highway fund, ten thousand eight twenty-seven oh seven. Wastewater fund, two thousand nineteen seventy-five. Taxes are due on Monday, September eleventh by, by four P M. It has been and will continue to be a busy week in the office. Julie has filled out the application and sent in supporting documents to Berkshire on the truck loan and they said they will call me back when ready with closing documents last week and I have not heard from them yet today, that was as of today. Um, so that's all from Julie and the two warrants, or the two motions rather, for payroll warrant, two four zero one two, for nine thousand thirty-four dollars and sixty-seven cents. And accounts payable warrant, two four zero one one, for thirty thousand, uh, dollars, two hundred, two, thirty thousand two hundred and fifty-one dollars and sixty-one cents.
Okay, any questions? Do you have a motion made for the warrants?
I'll make a motion to accept the warrant, payroll warrants, uh, two four zero one two and two four zero one one.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Rich, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Thank you. Carrie, any more questions about the treasurer's memo? Anything from the emergency management?
Um. Let me just check, maybe, I'm not thinking of anything, but unless it came last week. Nope, nothing this week.
Wastewater facility, there's a issue with number one egg.
Uh, health officer. I don't know if Jennifer has anything.
What's that?
Health officer.
Oh, skipped right over. Jennifer, do you have anything to add for health officer?
Sorry, I was having trouble unmuting myself. No, I do not have anything. The trailer here in, uh, West Polat is still there, so I don't know if anything will change before the next hearing in October.
I think the last word we saw is it's gonna be October before, anything goes down on that probably, Nancy?
Correct, they're waiting for the eviction process to take place. And that I think is, I'm gonna say the first week in October.
Yeah, so, we'll see what happens. Okay, thank you Jennifer.
Welcome.
Anybody else have any questions for Jennifer or we're good? All good, thank you Jennifer, have a good night.
Thank you, Joe.
Emergency management, and you found nothing? Health officer, wastewater is, um.
So there was just that one email about the pump.
The pump on Egg Street.
Pump one has failed on Egg Street. And the pump's been taken offline for now until repairs can be.
And I, I talked to her a little bit, there's a, there's a little bit of, uh, one of the manholes is gonna have to be fixed and they can fix it, but once they get it fixed, you'll need a little cold patch put around it or something to redo the, the blacktop. Um, I did talk to her a little bit and told her about this new opportunity that, with Devon and, and the Rutland Regional Planning that has money toward wastewater, so she's in the loop with that now and we'll include her in any of the communications and she was very excited to hear about that. And, other than that, they, right now, they're, they're doing their jobs in higher elevations to get them all buttoned up and then they're moving down here, 'cause up north, the winter comes quick on them and they wanna make sure that they get that all buttoned up before they, they come down here, but they got a few little projects to do down there, there's some pump work and there's one manhole to repair and a couple other things in the last, the last, uh, uh, information that she sent to us, update, I guess. So that's that story. Facilities report, Town Hall Use Inquiry, what's that?
So there was, let's see. So, um, somebody named, so there's a, a local duo that's looking in, looking to have some dance classes and clubs using the town hall and would love to potentially see what the opportunity is for that to happen in the auditorium. So, um.
The only thing I could think of is that we probably wouldn't want it during normal business hours.
If it's like something a little stompy.
Get the, get the rafters to shake it a little bit.
Um, I'll reach back out to her and just ask what, I'll send the application.
Yeah, application and, you know.
A little more information on that.
And we can review it next time.
You know, you know approximately what's going on, it's kinda like, we've rented it out a little bit before, but certainly would be, might as well be used instead of being up there being.
Yeah, if someone wanted to be in there.
The only other thing to think about is, most recently, it's all been sort of local groups and organizations that have rented it out and there is, there's always been a rental fee, um, which there hasn't been when like the Historical Society or different groups wanna use it for meetings, so what are your thoughts on that?
There would be a, I mean, for something like that, there would be a, a user's fee.
I know when Brooke Hughes Muse was doing yoga classes up there, I think it was like ten dollars a class or something, maybe, do you remember Bob?
Yeah, it. It's very minimal.
Yeah.
It, it was very minimal and, and it kinda, it's kinda based on how many participants they have, you know.
What they're charging for the classes and.
Yeah, you know, if they're, if they're jam packing the place, we're not gonna just give them ten bucks, you know, because everything is, would be based on participation, you know, the more participation, the more chance of the bathroom usage and stuff like that.
Sure.
Which turns into pumping and, and stuff like that, you know, so.
So it's a sliding scale of.
Yeah, it ha, I mean, I would think so and.
Okay. I will get more info and bring it back next time.
Right. Anything else on the facilities?
The lights are fixed.
Okay.
They come out at night. I still don't know how they work, but now they work.
Just like that, huh, perfect.
And there's no issues right now with the evaporator.
Okay, excellent, thank you. And the only things we gotta keep on the, on the market, on the, on our thought is we need to replace the evaporator in here for upstairs because if we, Jake said especially if we use it in heat pump mode, it has a much higher tendency to leak because they, they build a higher pressure in heat pump mode than they do in cooling mode. And we have one more heater to replace in the, in the wastewater treatment facility. We replaced one of the two last year and we have the other one that we need to replace, so. We gotta keep them on the list before we get in the middle of summer and, or, yeah, the middle of winter and everything all goes crazy. Was there anything for Meadowwee School Board?
No.
Okay, and toximeter?
So, I did get something else about that, hold on.
Don't forget to sign these badges.
So Julie followed up because I had asked what they wanted, 'cause I remember the last time there was a very wide price array of what maybe they could want. Um, and Julie said that the one that Tom wanted is the Alco Sensor F S T and, um, they are, it's four hundred and seven dollars each. So I think both of the constables wanted one.
So, that's far cry from what it was on the, the email we got there.
Well, the email had anything that ranged from.
Four thousand.
Twenty-five, there, four hundred dollars to forty-nine hundred dollars. So this is the one, so this Alco Sensor F S T has a one-year warranty, comes with, it looks like it has some sort of a contract and it includes twenty-five mouthpieces, two passive cups, a drink sniffer, carrying case and web-based training. Looks like you can buy a warranty extension for twenty-five dollars, but.
So one question I guess I have is to take a step back, now they're talking about this other certification. If they're not certified, is this toximeter gonna amount to anything or? Right, because.
That was my understanding that it, that they didn't hold when they did give a D W I or it didn't hold up in court or.
But they, they said they wouldn't, even speeding tickets, they wouldn't prosecute the cases 'cause they didn't have that something, something, something classification.
O R I.
I think we need to better understand how that whole thing works.
Yeah, because, I mean, if, if they don't have that, the, if they're not gonna prosecute the case, what good to buy a toximeter for? What, you gotta do pull them over and then hold them and see if the sheriff will send somebody down or?
Yeah, I think we need to get some clarification on that whole thing. Because I don't, I didn't really understand what they were.
And what's the state of that permit, is it?
So they're going.
How's that coming along?
So they, I'm, the law enforcement, the O R I experts are going to come and do a presentation for everybody here.
And explain that to us, okay?
Because something about, had to be X amount of law enforcement.
Yeah, well, and it's, so to, they, one thing that they were able to clarify for me through email was that it's not the town that obtains this number, it's the, I think they called it the constabulary, which are the constables for the town. So it's something that Polat's law enforcement has, it's not necessarily something that is associated with the town of Polat, so. But there are qualifications that would allow them to be eligible for that, or like different, there's things that would allow them to either be eligible or not, and that's what needs to be figured out. And so, when these, I think there's two gentlemen that might come down and when they come and provide a presentation, then we'll be able to figure out if that's something that we can proceed with and then what else that, what else is required.
Yeah.
Okay, anything else? I'm just seeing a letter I have here. That's older unfinished business. New business, I got this letter from D and eight, um, Nick, start the G I S planning for Rutland Regional. There's gonna be a meeting about the Delaware and Hudson Rail Trail Council, preliminary meeting on September the thirteenth at six o'clock, in person or virtual. If anybody's interested. It's in Rutland, but it's in person or virtual.
I'll probably be attending that, I attended a rail trail meeting last year that was sort of in person for this, so I'd be looking to go.
Okay, great. Any other old or unfinished business? Got that up again, new business, public comment?
I have a question.
Yes. Go ahead.
I remember you were gonna talk about, uh, replacing the speed signs, I just wondered what happened to that.
So, I can speak to that. So, the, um, we had to get approval for design and placement for permitting because in order to put them up on state roads, it needs to be permitted. So I've been emailing back and forth with the state and we got some approved locations and so now the, I'm just waiting for him to clarify whether, what exactly we need on the permit and I don't think, from what I can tell, there's no fee associated with that, which is good. So I just am waiting to get some feedback and then the permit will go through and then we'll be able to put them back up. But there are three up currently.
Um, were they gonna put one back at the West Polat Fire Department that was there before? I thought I heard talk of that at one point.
I heard talk of that too, but I'm not.
Was there one that was, that needed batteries or something?
So that one's been replaced and is, I believe, back at the town garage.
It is by West Polat Garage over there, there's one sitting there.
There's one on the North Polat Road, there's one on Kelly Hill Road.
There's one up here.
And there's one.
Wasn't there, on Rupert Mountain?
I believe there's one on Rupert Mountain, so, um, we can.
Is there still one in West Polat that, that warns you that the road's construction there? I don't even pay attention to my country anymore.
I haven't seen any in West Polat.
There's one sitting by the garage.
Okay.
The solar panel. No, there's one, but I see the solar panel part of it's by the garage there.
And the batteries, the replacement batteries came like maybe last week.
Oh, okay, so it just needs to be put back together and then.
If it's something, maybe we can ask and see if it can be put up in West Polat while they have manpower to do it and then when we get the permits, we can see about putting them back on the state roads, but, good question.
All right, Frank?
I, Jennifer can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think the discussion about these electronic signs evolved because of the West Polat situation and the signs have disappeared from West Polat for at least six months. Uh, so I'm wondering where I are all going, someplace else, if we have to buy some more signs just so West Polat can be served.
We just gotta, we just gotta move them again, so, we'll talk to the road crew and get them.
But it should be also up at top of the hill, coming by Little's House, just as it comes down into the village, 'cause they'd see it there, slow down here and then they have to slow on all the way down.
We'll have to, we'll have to arrange to get permission to stick it on somebody's lawn.
They're going to.
Well, the signs came to be because of the speed concerns in Polat Village and the state wasn't able to revisit the speed limit through the Polat Village, so that's how the signs came to be. And the intention behind getting the mobile ones was so that we could move them around every six or so months. So they weren't ever intended to be in any one place permanently, so.
In this discussion though, Jennifer, Jennifer, do you wanna say something about the West Polat?
Well, we're gonna put them back. I just wanted to acknowledge that we didn't necessarily purchase.
We'll work with the road crew and get them back. Is there anything, uh, for the new business? Okay. So then we're gonna wait, we're gonna go into executive session at eight o'clock.